They become better readers and writers at the same time.
Good. More letters to the editors, I hope.
And I also am very fortunate in that I have older adults from the other classes working in my classes as volunteers.
As volunteers. Well, you know, that is a natural thing for seniors. You know, many times you think, "Well, I can put my burdens down." And then you look around and you go, "Wait a minute. I can go help here. I can be active, serving a meal or helping a struggling student achieve what they're capable of." That's very heartening. I love to hear the stories of the 70-year-old grandmother who's gone back to school and gets her high school diploma. And next thing you know, she's in junior college someplace.
And these people are really doing my students a wonderful service because I have adults who are functionally illiterate.
Yes.
And these people come in and they have the patience of saints. And they sit with the students one-on-one and they blossom. My students blossom and they go on to the GED program and the high school diploma program and to college. And it's really because of all that special attention.
Yeah. But you know, it's funny, the program, of course, all of us have heard about, reading is fundamental. People forget what a terrible burden it is to not be able to read, to participate. So what's the outlook with these programs? And we just mentioned one, whether it's ESL or getting your GED when you're older. I don't know what to do.
Nor do we. We are absolutely fighting every way, which way we can to get the program to keep intact, at least the ones that, like I said, for the active adults. Because we have some programs for adults that are in residential homes.
Right, of course.
And those students need the services as well, but the active adults especially because it does, it keeps them sharp.
Well, I have often said to people, sometimes I think the world is upside down. We are paying more attention to people who are swiping a check from the government trough than the people who are active and engaged and have contributed their whole lives. I have a program. It's called Goya, Get Off Your Butt. You know, if they don't contribute, who says you're supposed to get? I don't know where that ever came from. These people that you deal with are part of our society. They helped build this country, this city in particular.
We were going to close a class and the students wrote letters to the board members. And they shared how meaningful these classes were because it gave them a purpose. It gave them somewhere to go and to look forward to and to connect with other people their age. They felt useful.
Well, Nancy, let me ask this question because I find this of keen interest. What about their support structures? Were their families actively supporting them? Or were they out there on their own, just, you know, seniors making noise?
They were seniors making noise.
I got you. I got you. Somehow or another, that separation of the families, they, "Well, the state will take care of them," or "There are programs for them. I don't have to be bothered." Wait a second. You better be bothered because it's going to be you in 20 years. You see that, I'm sure.
Oh, absolutely. Especially with the baby boars. I mean, we're not going to take it sitting down. We're going to get out there and fight for these classes.
I sure hope so. This is a popular talk show host here. You know, this really is pitchforks and torches now.
When I told, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, please. You can't interrupt me. I want to hear from you.
When I told my one class, this was about a year and a half ago, that my class might be closed, my older adult students, particularly one, Malouk, started to cry. She says, "What's going to happen to us?"
Yes.
It was heartbreaking.
Well, sure it is. Of course it is.
Don't we matter?
Yeah. Don't we matter?
Yeah.
We have to take a short break. We'll be back to this interesting, I hope you find this interesting, conversation. We'll be right back. Stay tuned.
Medication management is something we need to talk about because it's so important to have knowledge about the medications being used as well as understanding potential side effects. When in doubt, ask questions of the doctor or pharmacist for clarity. For example, are there specific times of day to take the medication? Are there foods that may interact with medication? How long will you be on this medication? What if a dose is missed? Do you skip it or double up? Develop a system to better track which medications are being taken. It makes it much easier to keep track of things when they're written down. Especially if the care receiver needs to go to the hospital or if paramedics are called to your home. Having a list of medications, the dosage and frequency that the person takes the medication can ensure safer treatment for them. File of Life is one way of managing your medication. It provides an insert that has all the pertinent medical information necessary in case of an emergency. It has a magnet on the back so that this little packet could just stay right on a refrigerator for easy access. Inside is this double-sided form that has all of the information that you need about your medical conditions, your medications, the dose, and the frequency can be very helpful. Plus, you also have the wallet size that you can take with you wherever you go. File of Life is available through the Department of Aging, so just call and ask for it. So why is medication management important? On average, older adults take more than five medications daily, including the dietary supplements. Each year, there are approximately 800,000 adverse drug events, also known as overdoses. Oftentimes, older adults see several specialists in addition to their primary doctor. And some patients may forget to tell one doctor about what the other doctor prescribed. And that could cause negative effects. Sometimes, there are multiple pharmacies involved. And so warnings are not activated by the pharmacy because they're unaware of what other prescriptions are being used by the same patient. Think about it. Do you know the names and dosage of your medications or the ones being used by your care receiver? Often, we know by color and shape of the pill which to take at which time of day. But we're not clear on which of these pills is for which of these ailments. It's important to know the difference. Having good medication management can result in a decrease in falls, unnecessary hospitalizations, emergency room visits, admissions into skilled nursing facilities, and an overall improvement of mental status. Also, in the event of emergencies like earthquakes, mudslides, or evacuations, a person may have to leave their home without their medications. It's important to know what you need replaced, what the dosage is, the frequency. So get to know your medications.
I'm delighted to be able to tell you about a special program that we have, which is Senior Pets for Senior Citizens. And what we know about having companion animals in our lives is that they make us happier. They make us smile. They reduce our blood pressure. And they greet us when we come home from wherever we've been, whether it's a walk or whatever. The other thing that went, as we get older and we get a little bit more sedentary in our lives, having a companion animal probably increases your exercise. You'll get up, you'll take care of your pet, you'll take your companion animal for a little walk. If it's a kitty, you'll clean your litter box. And when you remember to feed your companion animal, that's a reminder that it's time for you to eat too. So, you know, we just know that having a companion animal is the best way to enrich your life and to enrich their life because they need you too. Each year, at Los Angeles Animal Services, we have over 50,000 companion animals that come through our six shelters. So we have a selection that you won't believe until you come and see it. We have kitties of all ages, from kittens to mature cats. I actually would recommend a mature cat. They're a whole lot easier. We have dogs from puppies to mature dogs. Again, I would recommend a mature dog because they're a little bit easier to handle and take care of. And we have love in all-size packages. So come on down to Los Angeles Animal Services, any one of our six shelters. Meet our amazing animals. We have love just waiting for you.
Hey, buddy. Don't you know you should never leave a cooking pan unattended? And a working smoke detector can warn you of a fire, like the one behind me. My hero.
Next time, listen to the ball. Have a smoke detector and a fire extinguisher that work.
How'd you know?
The ball called.
Yes, yes, I know I'm late. I'll be there soon.
It's better to lose one minute of your life than your life in one minute. Watch the road.
Hello. I'm Dr. Scott Kaiser, board-certified family physician specializing in geriatric medicine. And welcome to The Empowered Patient. On The Empowered Patient, we like to talk about ways that we can take charge of our health and live longer and better. So today, we're talking about physical activity and exercise. And I'm here with Julia. Hi, Julia. Nice to see you again. We had you on before, Julia. You're also Robert Cox's caregiver. I know. Let's get you stopped on the treadmill here. All right. Very good. Very good. So we all sat here. So we're talking, it's nice to see you guys working out.
Yes.
Yeah. So tell me about this.
Now, that booklet that you gave us a copy of is wonderful because I never realized before how important it was to at least let your doctor know, you know, before you do exercise.
Right, right, right.
Just to be on the safe side, right?
To be on the safe side. So you're referring to our booklet here from the National Institute on Aging, Exercise and Physical Activity. It's a part of the Go for Life campaign.
Yes.
And there is a section in here that reminds you that if you have chronic medical conditions or if it's been a long time since you exercised, better safe than sorry if you're in doubt on those issues.
Yes.
Just go ahead and consult with your doctor before starting your exercise program.
Yes, because in Bob's case, he's had some problems, health problems. And the doctor said he must just have moderate exercise.
Right, right.
So that helped just a great deal.
And that's something that's outlined in the booklet, the difference between mild, moderate, and vigorous exercise.
Absolutely. And we're very grateful for that.
And the take-home point on that really is that exercise is likely, pretty much everybody. I can't really think of anybody who couldn't benefit from some physical activity exercise plan.
Absolutely. We walk a great deal and we dance. But this is a specialized type of thing to work out. Some of the upper body, we've kind of neglected.
Right, right. So there could, you could tailor your exercise program to you. And if you've had surgeries or if you have certain medical conditions, you might need to tailor your exercise regimen in specific ways.
Absolutely.
So the safe bet is just talk to your doctor about it before you start.
Absolutely. That's what we're doing.
That's great.
And thank you so much for that booklet.
Absolutely, absolutely.
For your good work.
And I'd even encourage you, as you guys continue to exercise, let your doctor know how you're doing. You have these sheets in here where you can track your progress.
We will.
And I know that you've been filling these in. Take them to your doctor's office. I'm sure Mr. Cox's physicians and your physicians would love to know the progress you're making.
That's important because I know it did say earlier on that you should keep your doctor aware of different circumstances. And so this is a wonderful idea.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for having us.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cox. So you heard it here first from an empowered patient, an empowered caregiver, that we can use this booklet, Exercise and Physical Activity. We can get active. We can get fit. And we can live longer and better. You can order this booklet from the National Institute on Aging. Just call us at the number below and we'll send you out a free booklet. And we want to hear from you.
I'm staying active every day. I'm in charge of my health.
Hello and welcome back to The Empowered Patient. We're here at the Hollywood Senior Center, at the brand-new Wellness Center. And I'm talking with Frank Newhouse. Always good to see you, Frank.
Same here, Doctor.
So I understand exercise is an important part of your life. And why don't you tell us a little bit about that?
Well, I figure it's the fountain of youth. That if you are willing to put in the time, that the rewards are immense. I walk at least five miles a day, five days a week, sometimes six. I go to the gym two times a week. I used to do three. I don't drink. I don't smoke. I don't drug. I don't burn the candle at both ends. And I think, you know, coming up on 76 this month, I think it has paid off. I'm delighted with the results.
Great. So you're feeling good?
Oh, yeah.
You feel full of energy?
Yeah.
And you feel that's related to your physical activity?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. You just can't beat yourself up consistently, year after year, and expect good things to happen. Some people are freaks of nature. I don't want to roll the dice on that and say, "Well, I'm going to be the exception to the rule."
Right, 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 right. And that's great to hear. You see, that a lot of people out there have a misconception that as you're getting older, you shouldn't exercise and that, you know, it could be dangerous. But I think that what we're learning here is that if you're doing it in a way where you have a plan, it can be a great thing. And I know that you've used this booklet here.
I have.
Exercise and Physical Activity. This is a product of the National Institute on Aging, free and available to anybody who might be watching at home. And so tell me, how have you used this booklet to enhance your already very active lifestyle?
Well, I read through it and I noticed the specificity of the exercises. And there were some things in there that interested me particularly, like the balance. My balance is not what it used to be, you know? And so I'm going to try some of those exercises and find out about others because I've heard people talk about improving your balance and it can be done. And I noticed that coming downstairs, that going up a hill doesn't bother me. But if I'm coming downstairs in a house, my knees, they're trying to tell me something. And so I'm going to, I'm taking glucosamine chondroitin.
So you're highlighting a great point here, is that here you are, you're somebody, you've been active. When did you say you started exercising regularly?
At age 30.
Okay. So for a good amount of time, you've been, you know, regularly active on a good regimen. But there are still some things that you thought you could add to it.
Yeah.
And so that there might be people out there watching at home who already say, "Oh, you know, I'm already active. What else do I need?" But you read through this booklet and you said, "You know, I have good strength and endurance, but I really could work on my balance a little more."
And I liked the fact that they were talking about liquids. And I drink 24 ounces of water every day. And I think that it has helped. And I'm glad that they recognize that.
Yeah, that's great. There is a whole section in here about staying hydrated. And that's important because a lot of people, as they age, might sweat less than they used to.
I do.
And if you really break it down on a scientific level, the whole thirst mechanism sometimes changes as we're aging. So sometimes it's, you know, very important that you might not feel thirsty. You might not notice you're sweating a lot. But that you need to continue to drink a lot of fluids before, during, and after physical activity.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a great point. It's right here in this booklet.
And I changed my regimen as far as weights go. I used to use more weight. And a friend of mine who has, he's 72, has the body of a 25-year-old. And he's lowered the number, the weight that he uses, but increased the reps.
Increased the reps, the repetition.
Exactly.
So more of the same movements.
That's right.
With a lighter weight.
Yeah.
So your goal is about 10 to 15 repetitions?
Well, with 12 pounds, I'll do 100 curls. And then I'll do 100 shrugs.
Oh, great, great, great.
So I use light weights.
Okay. So you use light weights and high reps. And you found that that's what works for you?
He says it works better.
Okay. Well, it's different, you know, it's going to be different. What works for different people. What's recommended is the 10 to 15 repetitions is a good starting point because then you can find if it's too little. If the weight's too much, you can't do the full 10 reps, you know? And if the weight's not enough, you might be going on and on.
Exactly.
So that's great. So you're staying active. And it's great to see you here at the Wellness Center. I know that that's another great resource for a lot of people out there. Call your local senior center. Call the Department of Aging. Find out what's available in your area. And just always a pleasure to have you.
Thank you, Doctor.
On The Empowered Patient.
Glad to be here.
All right. So here we have Frank Newhouse showing us how we can live longer, live better. As Frank likes to say, keep our bodies out of the clutches of the medical system if, you know, we're able to. And it's good to have you. So please give us a call. We want to hear from you. And we look forward to hearing your comments. And we have these booklets available, Exercise and Physical Activity. So just give us a call and we'll send you out a booklet. And great having you.
Welcome back to Aging Well in L.A. We're visiting with Nancy Svera and joined now by Michael Hughes. Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
We had a chance to talk beforehand. You're an amazing guy. You're talking, teaching ESL classes, correct?
Well, yes, but my big joy, I'm teaching Spanish to seniors at One Generation Senior Center.
Oh, you, people who don't have a facility in Spanish?
No. Many of them, they're there. They've been with the class for, I've been with the class two years. And they've, a number of them were with the class prior to my joining the class.
That's fantastic.
They're wonderful. They are, they're turned on. They want to learn. And it's just an exciting place to be.
Well, you can't live in Los Angeles and not recognize how useful this is, to be able to communicate with people.
And I have one student who just turned 91.
Oh.
And she comes to class every week.
Isn't that wonderful? Holy cow. I wish I had that kind of strength and durability. Who knows? What is the outlook for a class like Michael is teaching? I mean, that is, I mean, I know that's not traditional education. So is it off the radar screen entirely?
It is, unfortunately. The district is focusing on programs that are going to get people jobs.
Yes.
And with the older adult program, they know that they're not going to be out there getting jobs.
But nobody, given the realities, and you folks at home, you know this. Who gets to retire anymore? Well, people these days, so what are you going to retire from? You can't afford to retire. People who are seniors are going to be in the workforce. They need to be trained and educated. And a place has to be made for them. Now, Nancy, do you make special accommodations for people who are hearing impaired or maybe visually impaired, as so many of our seniors are?
We do have a sign language class. And not necessarily for people that were born hearing impaired, but those that are getting older and becoming hearing impaired.
Yeah.
And it's to teach them to be able to communicate with either their spouse who's losing their hearing or if they're losing their hearing.
Right. Because it's so, it's hard to communicate, especially with caregivers in a different language oftentimes. What about transportation? Are you seeing cutbacks there? Ooh, I hit a hot button.
Yeah. Yes, there is cutbacks in transportation. Unfortunately, everything has been hit hard.
All right. So the solution is not just paying more taxes, if that's required. We've got to start speaking up, our whole senior community. And I'm a part of this. We've got to start getting people's attention. Maybe it comes down to, "Hey, Sonny, get over here."
Absolutely. They need to be, the older adults need to know where they can go, who they can contact. When our program first started getting cut, we let them know where they, who their council people were, who to contact. And a lot of them did write letters. But it's a small, you know, proportion of the older adults that did it. We need more involvement.
You won't remember this, but Mike, you will, when the Great Panthers got started.
Of course, yes.
It was fabulous. You know, that's these people who are alive and vital. And it wasn't, they weren't demanding something they didn't deserve. They were asking for parity and equality and some recognition that our older citizens are worth something. They are wise.
Well, the seniors at One Generation are alive and active. And I have had, until this last year, just one class. Now it's been expanded. I have two Spanish classes at One Generation because we had enough students. We had a bunch that said, "Oh, that's an advanced class. We want to start a beginning class." So I have two full classes.
Isn't that amazing?
It's wonderful.
Now, when you say full, how many people are we talking about?
20.
Wow. That's a handful for any teacher. It would be.
And they inspire me because what I love is I can share with them. I can talk about, I can share their experiences. We can talk about the music that I love of their era.
Yes.
We can talk about stars and performers of that era.
Yeah.
And it's like, they understand where I'm coming from and my loves. And it's just, it's a vital, loving experience.
Well, you know I understand that as a kid who grew up on a television show from way back when. Nancy, is there, can people contact you through One Generation or are you here at the adult school?
I'm here at the adult school.
Okay.
But I'm in close contact with One Generation and they can contact me through there too.
It's an impressive organization. I was amazed at our last visit there. I loved it. Whether it was the dancing teachers or, and the nutrition, so important. There was a cooking class going on.
Yes. And they get a certificate so they can go out and get jobs with the certificate in restaurants.
You know, maybe the. And there is a singing class on Mondays. They have a partition. And the songs they're singing are the songs I love. And I'm teaching my little lesson. And on the other side of the partition, we have Rodgers and Hart.
Yeah, it's "Some Injanity."
That too. They meet. They have a pianist. And they sing these songs. They have people get up and do individual. And they're not afraid. No, they're not Barbra Streisand. But they get up and they're courageous and they sing. And I say, "Good for you."
This is best. Maybe the true answer, folks, is maybe we ought to take care of ourselves. Anyway, thank you both so much. Nancy, a pleasure to see you again. And Mike, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll see you the next time on Aging Well in L.A.
In the case of a disaster, you need to be able to communicate with emergency personnel and your support network as well as to stay current with the latest information. Make sure all batteries are in good condition. Keep an extra supply of batteries on hand for your hearing aids or cochlear implants in your emergency supply kit. Rotate them regularly. Install both audible and visual smoke alarms where at least one should be battery-operated. And test them regularly. In case you're left without your hearing aid or cochlear implant, plan how to communicate with emergency personnel. Store pens, pencils, and a small notebook with your emergency supplies. Pre-printed messages with your medical conditions or allergies are also a good idea. In order to get emergency reports, determine which broadcast stations provide continuous news coverage that's signed or captioned. Only you know what can prepare and assist you and your family in case of a disaster. Are you prepared? For additional information, please contact the Department of Disability or the Emergency Management Department by calling the numbers on the screen or by dialing 311.
G'day. Troy McCavon from North Hollywood. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.
Good morning. It's the forum call for the city council meeting Wednesday, September 7. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. I'm Councilmember Zine. And Mr. Garcetti, Council President, is here. We are looking for Mr. Alakam, Mr. Karnas, Mr. Englander, Mr. Chorretz, Mr. Lapal, Mr. Marshesbury. Mr. Anderson, Roll, and Mr. Westen. Please, Governor Chambers, it's now 10:00 a.m. Time to begin the city council meeting for Wednesday, September 7. Mr. Chorretz is here and I'm here and Mr. Weezer here. Englander is here. Again, it's now 10:00 a.m. This will be the forum call. Once again, Mr. Alakon, please come to chambers. Mr. Englander, please come to chambers. Mr. Corretes, Mr. Corriyan, Mr. LeBong, Mr. Parks, Perry. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosald, Mr. Westen, please come to chambers. Excuse today, Mr. Cardenas. Who else is scheduled to be here? Thirty-six items on the agenda. Ms. Perry, good morning. Ms. Perry has arrived. That's all yours for Councilmember Zine, Perry, Assistant Pro Tempo of L.A. City Council. Mr. Englander has arrived. We have Mr. Weezer, Ms. Perry, Mr. Zine, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Englander. We need Mr. Alakon to come to chambers. Mr. Corretes, Mr. Englander, Mr. Park, Mr. Englander, Mr. Corriyan, Reyes, Rosald, Westen. Mr. Weezer is official greeter for today, Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Greeters are welcome. It's now 10:05. We do have a forum call. Mr. Alakon to the chambers. Mr. Corretes, Mr. Corriyan, Mr. LeBong, Mr. Park, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosald, and Mr. Westen, please come to chambers. Mr. Tom LeBong has arrived. Mr. LeBong, Mr. Park, thank you. We now have Mr. Englander, Mr. Weezer, Mr. LeBong, Mr. Park, Ms. Perry, Zine, Mr. Garcetti. We need three more to begin our meeting. Mr. Alakon, Mr. Corretes, Mr. Corriyan, Mr. Reyes, Rosald, and Westen, please come to chambers. We're ready to begin, so we need three more members. We're going to turn the microphone over to Council President, Mr. Eric Garcetti.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for the 7th of September 2011. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and we are broadcast live on the city's cable system. Welcome our viewers on Channel 35, as well as those folks who are here in council chambers, and those who are viewing us remotely in our locations in San Pedro and Van Nuys City Halls, which you can always avail yourself of if you are closer to those places. Avoid some traffic and some pollution, and watch the city council and even testify from those locations. We're also available through the internet streaming live at our city's homepage at LACity.org, or also archived footage of our past council meetings can be found there, as well as all of our agendas. Supporting materials that council members receive are available for the public on any of the items we vote on. And then finally, we also have the telephone service called Council Phone, in which you can dial the following number to listen into the city council meetings. That's 213-621-CITY, 213-621-CITY. We're awaiting a quorum of our council, which is 10 members or two-thirds of our 15-member body. Thank you to councilmembers Englander, Weezer, Corretes, LeBong, Parks, Perry, Westen, and Zine, who are all here. Mr. Cardenas is excused today, but besides that, we are expecting the rest of the council. So the fallen council members are now about 10 minutes late. Councilmembers Alakon, Corriyan, Reyes, and Rosald. As soon as we have one more, we'll begin the meeting. Mr. Reyes is here, so with that, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Englander, Weezer, Corretes, Corriyan, LeBong, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosald, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Park seconds, without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Englander moves, and Mr. LeBong seconds, without objection. Those will be approved as well. If we can run through the agenda, colleagues, items you wish to call special. Now, if you can direct your attention to the items that are before us, we'll take any of the items that don't require any discussion, that'll go on consent, and call special any items requiring further review or public testimony. First items, please.
Mr. President, items 1 through 14 are items noticed for a public hearing. Items 1 through 4 are ordinances. Would you like to hold them on the desk until 12 members are present?
Yes, it's all the orders on the desk until we have Mr. Rosald, Mr. Corriyan, and Mr. Alakon.
There are no cards for any of those items.
Okay, we'll close the public hearings on those, then. Mr. Weezer.
Number 10, special, please.
Okay. For 5 through 14, we'll call 10 special for Mr. Weezer. Other specials, colleagues, 5 through 14. Seeing none, let's take up the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 15 through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. 15 through 19, any special colleagues, anybody wishing to reopen any of the hearings on these items? 15 through 19, and 15 is noticed for a public, sorry, for a closed session, if anybody would like to. But if not, we'll go ahead and we'll take it up. Yeah, we may recess. Let's go ahead, then, if nobody wishes to call those special, and take up items 15 through 19. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved as well. Next items.
Items 20 through 35 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, if there's no objection to consideration, those are now before us. Do we have cards on any of these?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on items 21, 28, 31, and 34. We do have a request, remember, to continue item 27 until September 27.
Okay, is there any objection to continuing item number 27 until the 27? If not, we'll go ahead and continue that. Mr. Zine also wants to call 34 special. Let's hold the commissioner nominations on the desk as well, and the two ordinances, which are 20 through 25. And if nobody wishes to call any other further specials, let's go ahead and open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved as well. Next items.
Mr. President, item 36 is an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold that on the desk for closed session.
And on the continuation agenda, item 37 is an item noticed for a public hearing.
Do we have a card on that?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, we'll call that special for cards from the public. And colleagues, if you'll indulge me for the chair, at the outset, we have a little special presentation we wanted to make. I think for all of us, we know that keeping the film industry here in Hollywood, in Los Angeles, where it belongs, isn't about movie stars or hot-shot directors. It's about the carpenters who build the sets. It's about the truck drivers who haul the lights, the nurses who take care of the crew. It's about the restaurants where they eat, the stores where they shop. We all know this is a very important moment in our entertainment industry. We've seen some production go up. We know it's a critical time in Sacramento, though. Mr. City Attorney, don't worry, we're not taking any official action. We do know that there's legislation pending right now in Sacramento to continue tax credits that have been so critical. Mr. Corriyan, of course, being one of the authors of the original ones. But the entertainment industry generates about $7 billion regionally for our economy, accounts for 141,000 direct jobs in nearly, nearly countywide, especially in these tough times. I think it's very critical that we preserve and protect this industry. So we have some members from Film L.A. here, our great leader, Paul Adley, Todd Lindgren, the whole Film L.A. family who's here. I want to thank them for their efforts, and they've brought to us today a new PSA that we'll be seeing throughout the Southland, and hopefully even beyond, but something that shows us how committed Angelenos are to the film industry. And we wanted to use this moment with the city council meeting to be able to debut this. And, you know, other regions, other states, other countries are making film industry offers that they can't refuse, and it's time for us to fight back, and you guys are doing a great job doing that. So if we are ready with the queue, let's go ahead and queue this, and if we can direct your attention to the monitors.
They're ready for you.
Oh, thank you. I'm sure some of you have seen a movie company shooting in your neighborhood. This movie company employs well over 400 people, who are all split up into departments and who all have a budget. And when they're shooting here, they'll spend it right in your community. The grip department gets all of its things at local hardware stores and lumber yards. The set dressing department gets all of its things from local furniture shops and art shops. The list goes on. The prop truck has everything from lawn chairs to lawn mowers. You name it, they've got it, and if they don't have it, they'll send a driver out to get it. Now, speaking of the transportation department, they'll use local rental companies and tire shops and gas stations. If they need anything for a vehicle, they'll get it right here in Los Angeles. Our catering department, that feeds everyone breakfast, lunch, and dinner, will go shopping in the same supermarkets you shop in, the same grocery stores that you shop in. When a movie company like this shoots in California, it brings millions of dollars into the local economy. Movie companies bring jobs, opportunities, and a flow of income, not just for the crew, but for all the services, shops, and restaurants in the area. Are you with the movie crew?
No.
We sell a lot of lemonade when they make movies here.
Yeah, a lot of lemonade.
Want some?
You see? Thank you, Los Angeles.
Let's get it here!
All right, first, we miss you, everyone. Let's go. Well, thank you very much to Film L.A. and the Filmworks campaign. A great PSA. Paul, did you want to just step forward real quick and say something to summarize the ongoing efforts that you are doing to keep filming here, local? The whole team can come on up.
Sure. I think there are a lot of people here who volunteered, and I wanted you to know that this film was made by volunteer efforts in the entertainment industry. We appreciate the council's approval of us helping to market this to the city and to the region and to the state. And in particular, we wanted to thank our past chair, Pam Fair, who's been a driver behind the Filmworks campaign, and our current chair, Ed Duffy, who continued that. And in the case of this particular PSA, our key partners were Ed Gutentag and Mike Kehoe, who helped really put together that entire program. And of course, in our own staff, Todd Lindgren and Philip Sokolowski, were key in making this entire campaign go forward. And for many of you who haven't met him yet, Adrian McDonald is handling all of our web content at www.filmworksla.com. This PSA and a lot of other good information is present, and we'd encourage you to look at it. This PSA will be up on the web. We're hoping it will come up and be available for the government channel 35. We're asking Metro to run it on the buses on their channel. And you'll begin to see Film L.A. PSAs and Filmwork PSAs in the theaters, as they've agreed to do that prior to the films. So we're very grateful for the opportunity to do this for the city and the region and the industry, and we thank you for allowing us to debut it here today.
Great. Thanks so much to all of you. Really appreciate the effort. Great film, and we'll make sure that is up there on Channel 35 as well. Appreciate you very much. With that, we'll turn now to the formal part of the meeting, and we have general public comment. First, Daniel Garcia is our first speaker. I'd like to come forward. Mr. Garcia here. Not, Michael Carrion is our next speaker. After that will be Arnold Sacks. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name's Michael Carrion. I was wondering where Ms. Perry went, because this involves her office. For the past three and a half years, I've been complaining about the illegal parking of police vehicles, city vehicles. You've got four of them right outside your building now. But yet, nobody here seems to care. You're all carrying on conversations. So my belief system is either you stand for what's right, or you fall for what's wrong. So as you ignore the things that are brought to you, you're falling for what's wrong. It's a perfect example on how the city of Los Angeles is going to howl in a handbasket real fast. Incompetent people at top, at city council, come to us and say, vote for me, and we will do all these things that we can, and we will stand by you and do what's right. Once you're in office, you're too busy reading a book, reading the newspaper, having your breakfast, having your lunch, or you just don't believe that officers break the law. If you don't like the law, change it. But please, quit BSing around the law and allowing all these illegal activities to go on. You're citing people. If these people over here, Ms. Perry, would shut up for a minute, we'd be able to hear. Can you tell her?
Sir, if you could please, if you could adjust the council as a whole.
Can you tell her to be quiet? I can't hear, yet she's the one that should be listening. This kind of attitude, that allowing somebody to carry on a conversation over here like Ms. Perry, yet nobody else can, because the president gets upset and tells other people to be quiet when they're carrying on a conversation and take it to the back. But Ms. Perry's over there chattering like a chatterbox, and nobody does nothing about it. How irate is that? This is the hypocritical standards that you live and run this horseshoe. It shouldn't even be a horseshoe. It should be a donkey shoe.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Appreciate your comments. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that, we'll hear from Dr. Tom Williams again.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Congratulations yesterday for your presentation regarding the Filipino veterans. But in another ironic sort of way to look at that, I believe you mentioned that it was 15 years for this legislation to move through to almost becoming approved, yet it's only six months and AEG is going to get a waiver on their environmental impact report process. So it's money talks and BS walks. Just a way to look at it, because you've all been, almost all of you have been in office for the extended period of time that you took for that Filipino war veterans bill to go through. Yesterday, I started to talk about, there was an editorial regarding the mayor's tenure, and it's this time to step forward. And part of the editorial... time to step forward. And part of the editorial mentioned that there was like about 475 people or thereabouts that had been laid off. And I was wondering if it had been possible to get a report from the CEO on how much those 475 people would have cost if you had not capped the E-RIP program. Because you're paying $30 million a year in extra benefits for those $475 million because of the pay raise that kicked in due to the fact that nobody knew, well, nobody on this side basically knew about the measure that said if you lay anybody off, the, some of the unions would get a 5.3% pay raise. It's amazing how that little nugget slipped through unannounced. But you got from the CEO's office a report on whether AEG would make a profit or not, and what they would have to turn over there. So I was wondering if the CEO's office could do and release a report for the public's benefit on what the difference would have been in raising the cap on the E-RIP.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. And it's true, we've all, just a point of information, we have been here each year. It's federal legislation, however, not city legislation on the Filipino veterans. Daniel Garcia is our next speaker, then Dr. Tom Williams. Good morning.
I wanted to give this to Perez and Reyes and Jose Weisler. I just want to, I just want to tell you that the housing discrimination complaint based on disability is up. You can read the reports. Is a report here be brought by the federal housing movement. This is very critical, because in California, our, 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 our state doesn't complain in California about discrimination files. Local and federally, Fort Darson, where allegation of disability discrimination. In California, we have 1,000 allegations or complaints in California. That in California, the second, the second highest one is Texas. We are number one on discrimination people. And people and people with disability have been discriminated, discriminated a lot more. Not just, not just by, not just by, by affordable, not by, yeah, affordable, but also accessible. I'm here, I'm here to ask the council to please make, make, make the mission statement on the LA city housing to make a change from affordable alone to affordable in the, in the, housing board. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. Appreciate that suggestion. Dr. Tom Williams is our next speaker, and Noel Weiss will follow him.
Dr. Tom Williams, El Surino, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, a volunteer. Volunteers seem to be a subject of interest these days. Wrexham Park, libraries, all sorts. What is a volunteer? You have, like tonight, twenty-some-odd people will assemble in El Surino and spend three hours debating, discussing, arguing, sometimes screaming at each other regarding how to improve our community, how to improve our neighborhoods. Neighborhood watches throughout the city. All of these are volunteers. Right now, neighborhood councils represent probably about 7,000 to 8,000 man-hours per month of volunteers. We need more volunteers, because we don't have the money to pay for employees. We have a lot of conflicts between the current employees and the volunteers. Everybody thinks it's everybody else's fault. But in neighborhood councils, we try to work together. Last night, group met for three hours discussing bylaws and things like that for the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. So we have volunteers. It's a question as to how to mobilize them. Putting in more bureaucratic elements, such as a volunteer division within the city, maybe personnel department, will just make things more difficult for volunteers to volunteer. And somewhat like in the neighborhood councils, all of the various requirements, now training and training and training and more training, take away from the one element. These are people who want to give, and then we make it so difficult for them to give. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Noel Weiss is our last speaker, and general public comment.
Good morning, council. I'm here in connection with, let's, shall we say, a general matter, the idea of council competence, covenant between the people and their government, same kind of a theme. You people are trustees. You're not boards of directors. This is a, you act as fiduciaries for the benefit of the public. Specifically, I want to call out a situation involving a project in Mr. Corret's district. It involves a Chabad on Chandler Boulevard. We managed, there was this matter, for those who are listening and watching, was basically run through the city council under Mr. Weiss's auspices before Mr. Corret got here, in about seventy-two seconds, minute, and maybe ten or twenty seconds. No real discussion, no real debate. Bottom line is, we had to go to court. Why? Because the, Mr. Resnick and, as his is wont, comes into this, before the city council at the last minute, new plans, this is how we need to do it, this is how we want to do it. City council, of course, rolls over. Net result is, I think, maybe for the first time, I got a court of appeal to accept the proposition that this council, very simple proposition, has to follow its own rules. When you 245 a matter, you don't have unlimited unfettered discretion. You have to, when somebody comes in with new plans, they got to go back before the zoning administration. I'm talking about the specific situation involving an appeal by Chabad for a project on West Chandler Boulevard. Jack Weiss came in here at the last minute and basically was able to get this council to go ahead and adopt what amounted to Mr. Resnick's revisions, contrary to what the zoning administrator said. Now, for you guys to do policy, it has to be predictable. Everybody, and we're not just talking about favored political interests, we're talking about the greater public good. This opinion basically says the city council can't do that. City council, when that happens, has to send it back to the zoning administrator. Mr. Reyes, by the way, in that situation, never even bothered to hold a hearing, denying, of course, the public the opportunity even to make meaningful public comment on the situation. And that, of course, was wrong. So it's going to come back before the council, and hopefully, in this situation, the council will be able to do it right.
Thank you. Completes our public comment for today. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, that would bring us to the ordinances. Those are items one through four, and twenty-four and twenty-five.
Colleagues, anything on the ordinances? Seeing done, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, would you like to take up the commissioners next?
I now have a request for number twenty-eight. Mr. West?
Very good, item twenty-eight.
Okay, all right, okay, never mind. Just a inquiry on number twenty-eight. We'll hold that. Let's go with the commissioners, twenty through twenty-three.
Did you want to take them together?
Are they on the same commission?
I believe there are two board commissioners and two different area planning commissioners.
All right, let's bring them together. Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. And there's chairs up there for the potential commissioners. Good morning.
Morning.
We'll start with number twenty. And I don't have the list in front of me. Twenty is the, Mr. Thomas Donovan?
Correct. Thomas Donovan, the West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission.
And then we've got number twenty-one, Mr. Romero. And then we have number twenty-two, Mr. Angelo. And then we have number twenty-three, Frere. Twenty, twenty-three. Okay, so let's start with number twenty. Mr. Donovan, Mr. Reyes, take it away.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, we're very fortunate to have a group of professionals, people who live and breathe Los Angeles and all of their different relationships, both in their private lives and their jobs. And we're very fortunate to have such a skillset in front of us. I want to thank them for stepping up again. This is round two for most of you? Not round three? Round three, okay. So we do have some very real wisdom and veterans. I just want to, for the sake of the body, if you can just each one of you share what you would like to leave behind as you move forward. In other words, you've gone through this phase, now you're going through another phase, a third phase. But what is it that you want to see as the next two, three, four years transpire? To know each one of you brings such a unique position and unique experience. So I know your involvement at your respective universes, given your profession. So if you'd just like to share that with us, with your name, the area that you represent, that you're overseeing, and what you would like to leave behind.
My name's Tom Donovan, and I'm on the West LA Area Planning Commission. I was appointed in April of 2009. So since that time, we've dealt with probably between sixty to seventy cases have come before us. And to let you know what I do as a commissioner, in each and every case, we get a package of documents a week before the hearing. Sometimes it's more than a couple inches thick. I read every single page of those documents. And then I go out and I visit the site of every single project, and I also check the neighborhood around it as well. Then I come back to my office, and I'm an attorney, and if there's been any case decided, I read them, and I even check to make sure there's still good law. And I then write a memorandum where I put in all the issues that I flagged and the questions that I have for the staff, for the applicant, for any opponents. And sometimes I arrive at a tentative ruling, but I will tell you that it's very interesting that when I go to the hearings, I am surprised to find that my tentative ruling changes after the testimony. And I attribute that to keeping an open mind when I go in to these kinds of situations. I'm very proud of our West LA Planning Commission. We have excellent commissioners on there, and we work very hard. And I do want to thank them. They recently voted me vice president of the West LA Area Planning Commission.
As I recall, when you first started, you did bring up the challenge of housing and affordable housing and workforce housing in the west side of the city, not the easiest task. So kudos to you and still being there and my willingness to have another term. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Regina Freer, and this is my third time before you for confirmation. So I appreciate the other two, and I'm hopeful on this. It's been a pleasure to serve on the Citywide Planning Commission. I recently moved, and so I'm now in Councilmember Weston's district now. I was formerly in Councilmember Park's district. But the last six years that I've been on the commission, it's been a pleasure to get reacquainted with the city in new and different ways through land use. And particularly to see in this time when we obviously are facing serious budget challenges, that the department has stepped up so mightily to fill what could have been a really large vacuum with a lot of innovative policy. And so I've seen a real culture shift occurring in our city around transportation and mobility, around the thoughts and feelings about affordable housing and equity, about environmental issues. There's some new initiatives that we're particularly excited about regarding health and the potential for new health policies to create a nexus so that we can address some of the challenges that we faced around, you know, where environment and health are inequitably experienced in our community. And obviously, the community plans is something that we're looking forward to finally being able to have some say on. And so it's truly been a pleasure, and I look forward to continuing this and making planning and land use as transparent for our community as possible, so that they can feel that they're truly engaged and participating.
And that's such a critical point, given assertions and accusations that occur as to what was stated earlier in one of the public comments. It is very important to be transparent. But just as significant is the cultural shift to transportation, trans-oriented districts. And for that, I thank you. And Council President, if I may ask, there's a lot of conversations happening around the horseshoe.
Yes, you're correct.
And the courtesy that we should be giving our speakers, given that they volunteer their time, I think is critical. And knowing that these are planning police powers, which is one of the most influential areas of policy that affects our quality of life. So I'd like to appreciate some cooperation.
The staff on the sidelines, Sergeant Arms, if you could, the staff, carry their conversations out of the room. It is disturbing interviewing the commissioners. So be quiet when we're doing this. Thank you. Mr. Reyes, please proceed.
Barbara Romero, and I was, this is actually my third consideration. I served on the South Valley, and then I was reappointed to that. And then I served, my one term is citywide, and this is my third term. And I just, this is a difficult time in our, in our city, but I feel that it's an honor and a privilege to be serving, because I believe I'm a product of government worked for me. So it's a way to give back to, to people and to my neighborhoods to say, it's a responsibility that we have to serve our communities and our neighborhoods, even in these difficult times. So I see this as an honor and as a privilege. I look forward to the opportunities, like Regina mentioned. It's an exciting time because of there's, it gives, it has been exciting to see that we've adopted the bicycle plan. It's an exciting time even with looking at all the efforts along the LA River. I'm really excited to see how we can interface the high-speed rail, which is going to be coming. But with our biggest infrastructure project, that could be the Los Angeles River. So I think that voice needs to be there. So I feel like that's part of my job. But also, I think, most importantly, I think it's, as Commissioner mentioned, the first commissioner mentioned, that reading the staff reports, you come in with an opinion, but actually coming in, what I've learned through this deliberation process is that you have to come in with an open mind and hear the testimony and hear the new findings and hear what both sides have to say and come to, I think our responsibility is to come to determinations and recommendations for you guys that are sound and fair, but most importantly, that are responsible and that take into account all perspectives of these different neighborhoods that were actually have the opportunity to change the landscape. So I see it as a privilege and an honor to be here before you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Thank you. And I apologize for the distractions, given the conversations going on outside.
Javier Angulo, I have served, I serve on the East Area Planning Commission. This is my second appointment. Previously, I was appointed to the Neighborhood Council Review Commission, where I had an opportunity to engage with neighborhood councils and work in making our neighborhood council system work for the city of Los Angeles. And in this opportunity in the last four years, as an East Area Planning Commissioner, I just had the incredible opportunity to play my role. And what I see my role as essentially being the ambassador between the interest of those who want to develop and the community interest. And my role has essentially been to bridge both, so that we can definitely, so we can move our agenda forward in terms of seeing the better days of Los Angeles come forward to us. And I think we are heading towards that direction with our plans to develop around the Los Angeles River. I'm very invested in that. I want to work with the city council to make sure that we see that side redevelop and bring back businesses to the neighborhood. So again, it's my pleasure to be in front of you and continue with another four years in the council, in the commission.
Colleagues, as you can hear, we have a stellar group of candidates. I would 100% urge that we vote yes and have them continue doing the good work that you do. Again, on behalf of all the Angelenos, thank you so much for all your sacrifices, because I know it takes a lot of time and a lot of work. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Next speaker will be Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Weisler.
Well, good morning, the four of you. Thank you so much for being good public servants. I must say, I'm very prejudiced in favor of Tom Donovan, who's from the west side. My part of the world, and I'm delighted that you're back up for another four years. One of the lines you used, and all of you have said, is exactly what your groups are supposed to do. Go in with an open mind, but have a good mind, and know how to balance things out and to weigh things out. There's always been the politics that the developers control these elected officials. They certainly don't control me. They know that you come to me last. First, you go to the immediate neighbors, then you First, you go to the immediate neighbors, then you go to the homeowner groups and the neighborhood councils and the other community groups, and then you can come to the councilmen. But there's no wink and nod with the councilmen and no games that I play of any kind. Uh, I'm trying, and I'm sure my colleagues are the same way, to do what's best for the community. Javier, I thought your neighborhood council line was extremely good, because we have eight of them in my district, and they're incredibly engaged. In fact, they're more engaged than most democracies throughout our country are in terms of community groups. It's really gratifying for me. And Tom, you know that we have the most engaged constituency. Uh, we have a lot of folks with different opinions on different projects. Uh, you can walk into your meeting and you can see three or four people very, very strong against this, and then three or four, five people very for it, and the developer just on the edge of it all. I mean, these are community people. So it's even more challenging, uh, when people, um, you know, have time on their hands, have affluence, have education, and have a deep interest in their neighborhoods, uh, deep interest in the neighborhoods. Uh, and so from my selfish perspective, to have you, Tom Donovan, who's a lawyer, who understands land use issues, and when I was first a candidate for office seven years ago, I got in your car and drove around, and we looked at different structures and different situations, just to get a sense of it. And from that moment on, I said, if I could ever play a role with the mayor, whoever the mayor would be at that point, I wasn't, you know, I was running for office, uh, that you could get appointed to that commission. And, and you did. And, and so I, I, I'm delighted with that. And Javier, not to get too public about it, but as an openly gay guy, it's nice to have an openly gay person who's proud of who they are, and so the public can understand we're involved in everything, uh, and we're as normal and as great as everybody else is. So I, I just gotta say that. So that's all I have to say. I think it should be unanimous, colleagues. I think we're blessed to have these four great people step up again for another term. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. And along those lines, it's great to see a very diverse group of, uh, people working on our commissions that plan for our city and make some very important decisions. And I could say I've worked with most of you, and I just want to thank you for the work you do. All of you are thoughtful. Uh, you really put some time and effort into the commissions you have been on, and, uh, I just look forward to continue working with you. Um, all of you have shown tremendous, uh, commitment to these commissions, and I'm very happy the mayor had proposed all of you to continue working on these commissions. I look forward to working with you all. Thank you for your service.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you to all of our nominees. I think I know everybody up here and have worked with a number in, in different incarnations. Um, I wanted to just ask you something, uh, kind of a substantive question. You all have my, my support, but I think it's a moment when we have these, uh, recon confirmations. Right now, we're gonna hear tomorrow night from the President about jobs in the United States. Um, something that still is, after, you know, balancing our budget, which is making sure our house is in order, probably the thing that consumes me and, and I hope this entire council, um, and all of our leaders the most. We think of planning and land use as, as kind of regulation of neighborhoods and the texture of our streets. Um, but there was an interesting piece, I think it was a few days ago, um, an opinion piece, looking at the role of rebuilding our cities and what that can do to put people back to work. And I'm wondering what you think we can do from a planning perspective to accelerate jobs in the short term in the city of Los Angeles?
Commissioner Donovan, one of the things that I think would help for more jobs is to get work, more work done on our infrastructure, especially our roads, our streets, the transportation. I'm very enthusiastic about the light rail that's coming to the west side. I think that will help, and I think that if there can be any further stimulus from the federal government, it should go into our infrastructure. That will, by itself, I think, create more jobs and make a better livable city.
Commissioner Freer, I, I would concur that infrastructure is gonna be key with the millions of dollars that are gonna be coming to our city around transportation in particular. I think we have an opportunity. Obviously, people are gonna be employed building it, but there's gonna be a lot of planning and land use, uh, that's gonna go on around that. And so our TODs are gonna be critical, and I think they can be job generators, and they can create certainty for the community about what kinds of expectations around livability we can have in, in these destinations. And I think that in itself will set somewhat of a pathway for really good livable jobs, uh, productive and, and, uh, jobs that can help people to achieve, you know, their dreams in our city. So I think that's important, really key.
The reason my, uh, parents are not here is because if they don't work, they're, they don't get paid today. So, um, they're, they're doing temporary jobs right now because my family has, has experienced that. So I, I feel personally, um, the pressure and the responsibility to, to make sure to be open-minded, even when we have cases in front of us, in terms of what that means for jobs and opportunities and the kinds of jobs. Um, I think the, the other, we should look at infrastructure jobs with green jobs, and what does that mean? So I think it's trying to define what green jobs are. It's not just displacing, putting a new name to, uh, a new title and displacing some positions, but I think that's the way to look at it, is the, all the sustainable, I think, the wave of the future is looking at all these sustainable, uh, developments, and that could bring additional jobs. So I think looking at that, but obviously, it's all, when I speak about the LA River as one of the largest infrastructure projects, um, if you look at, um, the reason we have the cha, the flood control channels today is it was at a time of a recession. So I think it's an opportunity to really, um, look at how we can bring people back and, and invest in public infrastructure, so.
I think the, I think the mayor and the council is moving in the right direction, working with the planning department to streamline the permitting process to allow for more development, but at the same time, having the checks and balances to make sure that the development that does come in is in line with what, uh, the neighborhoods need. Um, I also very much support the mayor's thirty-ten plan. I think it's gonna be an incredible opportunity for us to expand our transportation system. And at the same time, I think we need to invest more in upgrading our streetscapes so that we can make our pedestrian-friendly areas, and I think there's a great opportunity for investment there as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Alakon.
Hi, I want to commend all of you for your service, uh, and it, uh, wasn't lost on me that, uh, Barbara Romero was instrumental in creating the Cesar Chavez Holiday. And, and I think it's, it was uniquely crafted with those of us who were in the legislature at the time. Uh, uniquely crafted to, uh, to educate kids about service to, back to their community. So I think that, uh, that you are living out that legacy, and, uh, Barbara, I particularly want to commend you for that. I don't think most of us know, uh, that you played such a, a predominant role on that. Staffing Senator Palanco on that issue, but co-chairing the community committee with my sister to establish Cesar Chavez Holiday, so I just wanted to mention that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. We have two public speakers, Mr. Weiss and Mr. Sacks, on the commissioners. They'll be addressing us, commissioners. They'll be addressing us. Thank you.
No reason to look at me. Um, I just, I'm here in support, actually. I've had personal experience on with, uh, City Planning Commission, and, and the two commissioners that are up are, are outstanding nominees. Mr. Donovan, had occasion to work with in, uh, West LA, uh, both before and after he's been on the planning, uh, the Area Planning Commission, and, uh, enthusiastically support his nomination as well. Um, I just also want to remind these commissioners going forward, uh, a lot of times when we're talking about the situation where developers come in before these commissions at the very last minute with new plans, um, the rule, uh, that we just got out of the Court of Appeal says, admittedly, it's an unpublished opinion, only applies to the Chabad case, but nevertheless, there are rules within the city that require these kinds of new plans to go back to the city planning commi, to go back to the zoning administrator for evaluation. And hopefully, whether it's these SB eighteen-eighteen projects or other projects where these developers are trying to basically scam the system, uh, that, uh, the commissions will do their job and act as kind of the, um, arbiter, if you will, or cushion between the political interests and the broader public interest. And I know that all these commissioners have that idea in mind. I know it's tough when you get phone calls from the mayor or from, uh, council people, uh, but nevertheless, uh, all in all, I think reconciling these conflicting economic and political interests, I'm confident that these commissioners, uh, that I refer to, and I don't know the other gentleman, but I'm sure he'll do a great job as well, um, are able to reconcile those interests in a manner that's, that, that really does justice to the policies and, and, um, and, and to the broader public interest as well. Thank you.
Mr. Sacks.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Um, a couple of things, and I didn't really want to warn any, uh, pick out any one commissioner, but some of you are reappointments, so I have a couple of questions regarding land use. You might have heard that there's a project in downtown LA, around LA Live, that consists of a stadium, and they want to rebuild a section of the new convention center on some property. So my question would be, because you're discussing land use, that that property has had vacant basically for, oh, probably twenty-five years or longer, because the renovation of the convention center, the new West Wing, took place in nineteen-seventy-one. And AEG has owned that property, more, some of that property since nineteen-ninety-six. So my question would be, in the land use, why wasn't that city property that's gonna be now have the new convention center built on it? Why wasn't that allocated or used for hotel property that would have increased usage at the convention center? It is the largest convention center on the west coast, and one of the drawbacks is there's no rooms for people to stay at. And here's city property that would have been available for a hotel that was never used. So when you talk land use, what is given out, like what AEG had promises and first, first returns on the use of land, what was given out quid pro quo for AEG that the city couldn't develop that property? Because you talked about the LA River. So what will be given out to these major corporations that the city, the public won't know about? And Councilman Rosendahl mentioned something about open mind when you have a hearing. So I was wondering, is that the same thing as being mindless?
With that, colleagues, take a vote on these four commissioners. Open the roll. Mr. Reyes.
It's, it's very easy to make assertions and accusations, and there's this notion that the elected officials are calling our commissioners to influence them in their decisions. Uh, I, I need to ask this question, and have any one of you been called by elected officials on this horseshoe to tell you what needs to be done to influence you in your decisions as commissioners? This is for the record, I, I, because it's easy to make accusations, it's easy to create environments of distrust, it's easy to attack, but I felt it was important to ask that question just for the sake of, of clarity and the record.
For myself, I can say the answer is no. I have been contacted by, uh, city officials prior to a hearing, and when I, when I am so contacted, I tell them that everything they say to me will be disclosed at the meeting, and I do so disclose, but I have been never, I have never been asked to rule or make a determination one way or the other.
Thank you.
I, I concur. The same for me, Mr. Freer. I have not been contacted, nor do I accept phone calls from developers or others either. I make my decisions in the room.
I concur as well. I have not been contacted by, um, elected official, officials or, um, and if I do get contacted, contacted by developers or community groups, I tell them the same thing as I'm not available to speak. We can speak, um, at the, you can speak at, uh, at the hearing.
I have not been contacted by elected officials.
Thank you.
Very good. That clears up that question. Now let's, uh, take a vote. Colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations to our four commissioners. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number ten. Item ten is a PCN in Council District fourteen. Uh, I might advise you that, uh, Councilmember Weezer has, uh, submitted, uh, item ten A, which has been distributed, uh, with recommendations and is now before council for consideration.
Mr. Weezer, just ready to vote?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention we circulated the, uh, ten A to, with approval with the original motion.
Very well. So on that matter, colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
That brings us to item twenty-eight, called Special for Cards.
Number twenty-eight. Daniel Garcia, Daniel Garcia.
I just want to remind the, the community, the CRA, to make sure that, that the people with disability are included in the plan. I just want to know, is there a plan for people with disabilities? Is there a plan for, for more affordable housing and accessible housing? Is there a plan for the city of LA to accommodate the, the financial growth of people with disabilities that would become, would be, would be, becoming from the, from a, from a, senior city will be more demanding on the housing? I just want to know where my plan to the LA. Thank you.
All right, colleagues, on that matter, it's before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Item thirty-one, called Special for Cards.
Number thirty-one, Arnold Sacks.
Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. Just out of curiosity, what the policy is with the city? We have records from the LA DOT being destroyed at, from January first nineteen-ninety-nine through January first two thousand and six, item thirty-one, and records from the LA DOT for, records from nineteen-eighty-eight through two thousand and five. So there, are they two different sets of records from the LA DOT? Because they cover a period of eighty-eight through two thousand and five, and you have the police commissioner destroying records from eighty-six to two thousand and six, which is thirty years. So is there a, a policy on, on this record retention? Because although it doesn't seem like much, the price is paid for these records, and since you're keeping records, you're destroying records up to two thousand and six, that means you're only keeping records for six years. Two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, two thousand and five years. So is there a policy that would say, hey, we only have to keep records for five years, why the hell are we keeping records for thirty-five years? Why is that being done? Why are you paying those extra thirty years of bookkeeping or recordkeeping or storage when it's not necessary? I know it's trivial stuff. Maybe Mr. Reyes would clarify that. Oh, by the way, Mr. Reyes, you mentioned calls from city council members, but you didn't mention calls to the commissioners about any calls, which would have been even more clarifying. Um, but again, back to the recordkeeping. How many other departments are keeping records that are over thirty years, over twenty years, over six years long? Five years old? Because you set a standard here for two departments to maintain records for five years. Why not maintain them throughout the city?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Uh, any members wishing to speak on thirty-one? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please. That brings us to item thirty-four, called Special for Cards, and Councilmember Zine. All right, we'll go for the cards first, and Dwight Waldo, if you'd like to come forward. Is Dwight here? Come on down. And then Arnold Sacks will follow.
I believe I'm speaking on thirty-seven.
Oh, for graffiti, uh...
Yes.
Task force, it says thirty-four, and this is the graffiti one.
This is the graffiti one? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I was...
You might have a card in thirty-seven as well, but you did fill out one.
No, I was just under the impression that was thirty-seven.
It's thirty-four. You're, you're, you're good.
We're good, okay. Hi, my name is Sergeant Dwight Waldo, and I'm a police sergeant out of San Bernardino. I've been an officer for about twenty-seven years, and for the last twenty years, I've dedicated my career to dealing with graffiti and graffiti vandalism. I, uh, I'm also the executive director for a statewide organization regarding graffiti. I was looking at the outrageous campaign that the Aaron Brothers put out, and I had a lot of concerns, as did Councilman Zine. Uh, while I was trying to figure out how we're gonna deal with it, because this is a nationwide issue, uh, the desire to have what appeared to be illegal graffiti promoted, uh, Councilman Zine made the proposal for a resolution against Aaron Brothers for their art kit. Aaron Brothers immediately responded, did a really good job, and, uh, said that they stopped doing this in the greater Los Angeles area. I sent some, uh, communication to corporate offices, and was told that there was a person there handling all the com- handling all the complaints. Obviously, they had a lot of issues with it. And I expected not to get any kind of response back from Aron Brothers, having done a lot of discussion with corporates on this kind of problem in the past. Within 20 minutes of sending my facts to, to corporate, their president, Jim King, called me and basically told me this had been the worst 10 days of his life. And we had some discussion about my concerns and the fact that his press release indicated just the greater Los Angeles area. After our conversation, we exchanged a lot of information between each other. He told me that he was canceling all the events, which includes those events being, showcasing criminal graffiti vandalism as being mentors for youth. They took down all the questionable material on the website, and he told me that all his stores, all 145 stores in all the states he goes in, is dropping this campaign. I would just like to commend Councilman Zine for quickly acting on this. It gave a huge amount of help. And really commend the president of the company, Jim King, for, for his quick action in dealing with it once he understood the problem. I talked to him this morning, even though his mother died today, he's going to be at the Hollywood store on Saturday to ensure that the canceled event doesn't cause any problem for the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sergeant. Arnold Sachs, our next speaker.
Good, good afternoon, good morning again, Arnold Sachs. Well, not that I will glorify graffiti, but my question would be, like, I believe the Mocha, Metropolitan Art Museum, just had a graffiti-based exhibition. One of the artists called Banksky or somebody else was there. And I don't recall the council making a motion, taking any action, saying, we don't appreciate the fact that you're applauding or you're glorifying graffiti. It's a millions of dollars cost to the city of L.A. I don't think any councilman stepped up to the plate and said, we shouldn't be supporting this art exhibition, no matter how glorified these artists may be. I just don't recall hearing that. And I've come to a lot of council meetings. Maybe somebody could refresh that for me. So for you to step up here, sure, they made a mistake. Coke made a mistake with New Coke. But you didn't do anything when Mocha had their exhibition. You, now you're stepping up, you're hypocritical at least.
All right, Mr. Zine will be our first speaker on this item.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. The resolution, signed by myself, Mr. Parks, Mr. LeBonge, Mr. Rosendahl, came about as a graffiti starter kit that was promoted by the Aron Brothers. When we saw that, we introduced the resolution, and it was going to come before council yesterday because of the recess. And subsequent to that, Aron Brothers contacted our office, rescended the program. And I want to thank the sergeant from San Bernardino for coming out here this morning and supporting this. What we have is $7.1 million that's spent annually eradicating graffiti from the city of Los Angeles, 34.5 million square feet removed from the city of Los Angeles. It's, it's a growing problem in the city of the angels. And what Aron Brothers did was step up when they saw the consequences. I think they were somewhat naive in Texas to think that it was simply an art form. I have nothing against art, and if people want to be artists, that's wonderful. But when you're tagging walls and you're destroying public and private property, I don't consider that art, neither do many of the people of our great city. So what Aron Brothers did was pull the program. I did go to one of the Aron Brothers stores, went inside and saw the outrageous, which is what the title was, outrageous. But they had markers, they had paper, and they were going to pass out these graffiti starter kits. In addition to that, they had a book that was a $24 book, and it was an illustration of exactly how to pick a wall, how to do it, and how to tag on a wall in any and all communities. That was sold for $24 and change. I do have that book. That was basically a guide on how to do graffiti in a community. So what we want to do is note and file the resolution, and we want to acknowledge Aron Brothers for good consciousness by coming forward and voluntarily stopping the program. In addition, Mr. King, who's the president of Aron Brothers, has said they're going to make a major donation to the local boys and girls clubs, which they were going to do as part of the program. They're going to continue making that donation. So what we would ask is that the matter be noted and filed. In addition to that, I've got some resolutions in addition to this. And those resolutions call for three separate matters. Number one is to have the city attorney draft an ordinance, which is going to require the merchants to post a sign where there is spray paint. And we do have an ordinance that requires it to be locked, outlining the fines and the penalties of illegal tagging or graffiti. And also, the second one, we have the LAPD review graffiti point-of-purchase identification, which they do in the state of Oregon. And there's a process that Oregon has implemented because of their graffiti problem. So we're asking LAPD to review that Oregon process and see if that would apply here in the city of the angels. And the third matter is for the LAPD to give us an update on the graffiti tracking program that they've implemented within the Los Angeles Police Department. We know there's a $1,000 fine for people who identify a tag or a graffiti person who's vandalizing public or private property. We want to encourage people to turn those individuals in. We want to keep the city clean. And again, we're spending millions of dollars a year, $7.1 million a year on graffiti eradication. That money can go for a lot other purposes to help the people of Los Angeles. So I would ask that we, we note and file the resolution and that we support those motions that are going forward to ask, so we can address this and hopefully bring an end to the illegal graffiti or tagging throughout the city of Los Angeles. Again, I do support art, and when you're tagging freeway walls and bridges, that is not art. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Any other members wishing to speak on this? Now let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, that is approved as well. Next item, please. Mr. President, that brings us to item 37, called Special for Card. Okay, we've got one card on this one. Diana Bergamini would like to come forward? Yeah, Mr. Rosendahl?
Mr. President, we have had a discussion on the side there between this, this lady and Building and Safety. And we've come to a point where we're going to continue this item with your support for 90 days.
Sure.
We're, we're not going to go forward with a lien on the property. What we're going to work on is getting her legalized in that situation and deal with those issues afterwards. I'm going to have two members in my staff, Arturo Pena and Len Wen, sitting with Building and Safety, working with her on a resolution. So I ask my colleagues to continue that item for 90 days.
Okay, so we'll just continue that for, for 90 days. It's September, October, November, December. I think we'll be looking at December 6th. It will be 90 days. Okay? We'll continue that till then.
Great.
And without objection, if we could reconsider item 28 as well? If we can open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That's approved. And if we can move that till Friday, continue that, September 9th, without objection. Okay. Well, next we go to item, I believe, 36. It's the only one left. That is for closed session. If we can now, in accordance with California state law, we'll move into executive session to discuss items that are before us of a legal matter. And if there's any actions taken that we need to do in public, we'll do that right after. Thank you, and stand by. We'll be back after considering item 36.[1100.00]
California's agriculture and environment are under attack by something which may appear harmless, but its damage is very real. The damage by invasive pests. Learn about stopping their attack at HungryPests.com because they're here and they're hungry.
You know, it's that time of year again to clear all that annoying dry brush from around your house. In the event of a fire, dry brush is extremely combustible and can explode. By clearing brush 200 feet from your home, you create a barrier, lessening the likelihood of spreading a fire. I'll still be here when you get back. Get the message. Be prepared.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian and something like an event such as a parole week.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, the guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Police are investigating a series of bizarre and disturbing attacks that have left children in cities from coast to coast injured and fearing for their safety. As Global Zaniga Bauer tells us, the young victims were targeted simply because of the color of their hair.
Say better and well, we begin with an Eyewitness News exclusive disturbing video of a gay man being beaten in Queens.
The individual was attacked simply for his orientation and we're just not going to tolerate it.
The word hate is just unexcusable. It's a word that shouldn't be used and to hate somebody for the color of their skin is just not right.
It creates fear among all of the community members.
I think it's wrong how people discriminate against others just because of the way they prefer people as in gays or just their skin color. It's wrong and something needs to be done. A hate crime is any criminal act directed against a person based on the victim's actual or perceived nationality, religion, sexual orientation, disability, gender, and especially race. Examples of hate crimes include acts which result in injury even if the injury is slight, threats of violence that look like they can be carried out, acts which result in property damage, any criminal act or attempted criminal act including property damage directed against public or private agencies.
A suspect can spend up to one year in jail and if it's a felony, it could either be between two and four years for a prison sentence.
If you believe a hate crime has occurred or will occur, you are very much encouraged to contact the Los Angeles Police Department or the WITIP hotline. Public cooperation is often essential in solving hate crimes. WITIP hotline, 909-987-5005.
Hi, I'm Los Angeles Mayor Antonio Villarosa and I want to tell you to shop L.A. because for each $10 in sales tax that you pay, the city gets a buck and we can really use those dollars.
To support our libraries.
To staff our animal shelters.
To hire more firefighters and police officers.
To take care of us feeders and our parks.
And to support all the animals in our zoo.
Make sure you shop L.A. and buy it in L.A. That way you can put those sales tax dollars to work to benefit all of us in Los Angeles.
Keep the West at home. Los Angeles, Shop L.A.
We are back in session, and we now have Special One, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. City Attorney? Pardon me?
Hasn't been circulated.
Oh, it hasn't been circulated yet.
I'll go to announcements then.
Circulating now? Oh, I have to sign it. Oh, we just came out of executive session, and we are now resuming the meeting. And moving forward with paperwork to announce Special One. What do you want to do, Mr. Clerk? Post and referred?
Yes, Mr. President. Council has motions for posting and referral.
Let's post and refer.
There are excuses on the desk.
Let's go through the excuses.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on October 26th due to city business. That meets council policy.
That's approved.
Councilmember LeBonds requests to be excused on October 21, November 1, and November 2 due to city business. That meets council policy.
That's approved.
Councilmember LeBonds further requests to be excused on September 9 due to city business. A motion is required.
Motion required. We will make that motion. Mr. Garcetti makes the motion. Thank you.
Is there a seconder for that motion?
Seconded by Mr. Englander.
Very good. And Councilmember Alacon requests to be excused on October 4 due to personal business. That meets council policy.
That's approved.
The desk is clear.
Very well. Do we have the circulation down on Special One?
I'll speak to it while it's being circulated.
All right, it's being circulated now. Mr. State Attorney?
Okay.
Mr. State Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. Due to the council recess, council has been unable to introduce Rule 16 motions regarding state legislative positions until this week. Since the August recess, AB 436 has progressed through committee to the Senate. Immediate action is required for the full council to take a position on AB 436 regarding SBX 2-9 funding of the Department of Industrial Relations before the state legislative session ends on September 9. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
Very well, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Garcetti?
We can go ahead and vote on the findings, and then I'll pick on the substance.
See, no questions. Open the roll. Mr. Corrigan?
I think before we can make a ruling on the findings, we need to know the basic content of what AB 436 is so that we can understand the nature of the urgency and why this is only being brought before us now in the last week of session as opposed to on regular notice sometime earlier than this.
Well, on the findings?
Yesterday from Building Trades folks, that there is a bill that was in the session right now that ends on Friday. We've been out of session, in which it's consistent, I'll get to the substance in a second, with what we do here with public works projects, what Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry have done and others in terms of making sure we have compliance with prevailing wage. They're making sure that public works projects in the state also can have a small percentage, which is standard practice, be given to the Department, I think, of Industrial Relations for Compliance Monitoring Enforcement. And because it's not sure where it's going to go, the vote is this week, we wouldn't have time to Rule 16 it because they're going to be out of session on Friday.
Okay, that answers your question, Mr. Corrigan. Okay, thank you. All right, now open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, Mr. Garcetti.
Just briefly, colleagues, AB 436 is a bill that ensures that public works projects, as I mentioned, in the state are in compliance with prevailing wage requirements by providing a fee and a billing mechanism to the Department of Industrial Relations for compliance monitoring enforcement. Part of the problem has been with public works projects, they haven't been able to do that, and a number at the state level have been slipping through, and they've had this results actually in higher tax burden for all of us because then it has to come in the force of challenges afterwards instead of the compliance during. By supporting AB 436, if we go on the record, we can make sure that proper wage compliance is achieved and help ensure that contracts on public works projects are awarded to bids that are based on efficiency and quality of work rather than bidders who are trying to game the system by trying to pay substandard wages to their employees. This is very similar to what we already do here in the city, and in doing that, we make sure that it, again, doesn't get fought out after the fact that we don't have kind of false numbers that suddenly people come in with lower bids, and then after the fact we have to ask them why there's all these complaints from workers. It ensures that that happens simultaneously. So we have to make sure that our economy is going again. This means good jobs, investing in critical infrastructure, and this is making sure that we have good-paying public works projects in our economy, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Mr. Corrigan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the explanation, Mr. Garcetti, and I think that as it has been described, this position merits our support. My only concern is that what sometimes happens in the last week of session is that there can be dramatic changes in the contents of a bill. And so I would ask if you would support as a friendly amendment, language to the effect that this council supports this bill in its current form so that our position of support doesn't get translated into some entirely different kind of bill between now and Friday.
I would gladly support that now, having studied more and more the gut and amend way of doing things in the last week, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well, so as amended, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Very well, thank you. Next item. Fourth with? Fourth with on that matter. So we're up to announcements? Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Alacon, announcement? No? Okay, adjourning motions. Anyone for adjourning motions? Please stand for adjourning motions, Mr. Alacon, Mr. Reyes. Please stand for adjourning motions. Mr. Alacon first.
Councilmembers, I'm sure that you heard that on Friday, September 2, 2011, we lost Detective Two Jesus Jesse Ravega out of the Foothill Division. He was born December 19th, 1962, in Glendale, Arizona. He was a 24-year veteran of the LAPD. Detective Ravega was appointed to the Los Angeles Police Department on October 20, 1986. He worked as a probationary officer in Northeast Division and was most recently assigned to the Foothill area. During his 25-year tenure, Ravega was assigned to the Southwest Division, South Bureau, South Bureau Crash, South Traffic Division, 77th Division, West Traffic Division, and Foothill Division. Detective Ravega was assigned to the Foothill Gang Impact Team as an investigative detective supervisor on November 7, 2010. During his tenure, Ravega received 57 commendations, including commendations from citizens, businesses, and other agencies. Jesus Ravega, known as Jesse to family and friends, was driving northbound on the 101 freeway near the 110 when he lost control of his motorcycle and was run over by a truck Friday morning. He died a short time later at County USC Medical Center, leaving behind his wife and three children. Ravega was considered a legend at LAPD Foothill Station and a hero amongst his family and friends. His death sent shockwaves through the department where he was a respected detective in the elite gang unit. Per the gang unit at LAPD Foothill, he was an avid golfer, sang in his church choir, taught Sunday School at his church. LAPD Chief Charlie Beck said, "Many, many partners are going to miss him very, very much. He was a decorated detective, worked one of our toughest gang units, and did a magnificent job at it. I'm going to miss him personally, and the department's going to miss him greatly." A family friend and spokesman, Alex Gonzalez, added, "Jes was always a gentleman. He was a solid Christian. He's a firm believer in God, and that's the way he lived his life. He was a godly husband, a godly dad, and he was a godly cop." Detective Ravega is survived by his wife Jeanette, son Joshua, daughters Janice and Julia, mother Antonia, sister Blanca, brothers Marco, Henado, Ruben, Bobby, and Fernando. And the visitation and celebration of life is going to be this Monday at the Lighthouse Baptist Church in Laverne, California at 7:00 p.m. And there will be additional services Tuesday, September 13, at Faith Community Church in West Covina at 10:30 a.m., and the interment will immediately follow the service at Rose Hills Memorial Park in Whittier, California.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Over our break, colleagues, we lost a great American artist who lived in my district, June Claire Wayne, who was born March 7, 1918, the age of 93. She passed away after an incredible life as an American artist. She was a pioneer of the art of lithographs, fine art, printmaking, and in the 1960s pioneered the resurgence of that as an art form we now take for granted. In 1941, she got married to an Air Force flight surgeon, and when Pearl Harbor was attacked, left New York City, even though she was originally born in Chicago, for L.A., but there was a job that came up for radio writing at WGN in Chicago. And she took that, scripting several programs a day of music continuity and interviews with war heroes and movie stars on war bond shows. But after World War II ended, she finally did make it to Los Angeles, and she stayed, becoming an integral part of the California art scene. She took up lithography at Linton Kistler's facility, meanwhile painting and exhibiting intensively. And in 1959, W. McNeil Lowry of the Ford Foundation suggested to her that she write a plan to revitalize the art of lithography, which was floundering in the U.S. And a result of that was the Tamarind Lithography Workshop, named after Tamarind Avenue in New York, sorry, in Hollywood here, which opened in 1960. She worked for decades in the heart of Hollywood, making the most incredible pieces of art. It was recognized by artists who then kind of with her as an international force in printmaking arts as really the guiding light in that movement, and she transformed the workshop into a permanent format as the Tamarind Institute of the University of New Mexico, where it thrives to this day, and her works are widely recognized as masterpieces of the medium. She's represented in countless museum collections in the U.S. and abroad, dozens of awards and honorary doctorates, but she spent much of her time here, like so many creative people do in Los Angeles, in the heart of Hollywood at her Tamarind Avenue studio. And we miss and mourn a great artist, June Claire Wayne, who passed away August 23, 2011.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. I would like to adjourn today in memory of Ron Bolts, a dear friend to the Lincoln Heights community who passed away on July 10, 2011. Ron was born on September 29, 1921, in Barnsiel, Minnesota, to his late Joseph and Emily Bolts. The family moved to Los Angeles in 1936, where he resided in the Adwat area. Ron graduated from John Marshall High School. Ron and his twin sister Ruth loved to dance and won several awards for their skills on the dance floor. During World War II, Ron served in the Navy aboard the Camry, a sister ship to the Missouri, where the peace treaty with Japan was signed. Ron left the Navy as a lieutenant junior grade. During his youth, he worked for Citizens Bank as a messenger and worked his way up to managerial level. He rose to the rank of branch manager of Cocker Bank in Lincoln Heights for many years and remained there even after it was acquired by Wells Fargo. After retirement, he started a second career with Steve Katsen Realty Incorporated. Ron loved traveling. He was not married, had no children. He was preceded in death by his parents and siblings, Ray and Harold Bolts, Leona Rystrm, Helen Howell, and most recently, his twin sister Ruth Frost. Ron was one of those anchors in Lincoln Heights community. When they had the sidewalk sales, he was one of the key players in making it happen. Went through the whole issue of rejuvenating the Broadway corridor, bringing back the historic elements, the light posts, the benches, the trees. He was a mainstay in organizing and getting people ready for this whole process of decision-making, the BID. He was critical in forming the Business Investment District. When I was in high school in the 70s, he was a Cocker Bank manager, and he knew all the young people. He went into the parts of the neighborhood people would say you shouldn't go to, even the LAPD slows would tell them you shouldn't be in that part, and they'd pick him up and tell him maybe you shouldn't go alone. But he felt that confident about Lincoln Heights and that we're going to miss him. He was a great asset for the community, and my prayers are with his family.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes, any other adjourning motions? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Pastor Milton Maurice Merriweather, pastor of the New Mount Pleasant Missionary Baptist Church in Inglewood, California, who died at the age of 87 on September 5, 2011. Dr. Merriweather and his wife Gloria served that church as the pastor and first lady for over 59 years, and served as the community as a civil rights activist advocating social justice and equality for over six decades. Dr. Merriweather sponsored and led an outstanding fight against police brutality culminating in his testifying before Congress for public policy changes to ban the police chokehold. Dr. Merriweather has been honored by federal, state, local government, law enforcement, and community-based groups for his leadership and community service since the 1950s. Services will be scheduled for Saturday, September 10, at 11:00 a.m. at New Mount Pleasant Missionary Baptist Church in Inglewood, California. Dr. Milton Merriweather is survived by his wife Gloria and a host of family members. Many of you maybe recall Dr. Merriweather was very active in the city of L.A., and in fact, as a captain in 77th, I had to get him released from jail because of a conflict in a community issue which we were trying to ensure that his safety and a lot of other safety. But he was a very strong voice in the whole discussion in the city about the chokehold.
I'd like to second that.
And I'd like to ask Mr. Perry to second that.
Mr. Perry will second that. Thank you. If there's no other adjourning motions, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll? And colleagues, we'll be back in session on Friday in two days from now at 10 a.m. This meeting, the Los Angeles City Council, is adjourned. Have a great day.